We're going to start right on time, two minutes late. First and foremost, I want to thank each and every one of you all for taking your time to being with us this evening. It makes us feel warm to see that many people coming out to speak for themselves in their government. I want to thank you first for being here. I'm Representative John Torbitt. I represent the County of Gaston, which is the House District 108, which is next to Charlotte Meckenberg area. And I'll go ahead and go through the other members while I'm here before I forget someone. We have quite an array of representatives here. We have, on the Senate side, we have, of course, my co-chair, Senator Paul Newton, sitting to my left. If you want to raise your hand, guys, when I call your name, Senator Natalie Murdock from here in Durham. Senator Natalie Murdock from here from Durham. Senator Wiley Nickel from Wake. Senator Norman Sanderson from Pamlico. I think he wins the furthest away this evening. Senator Mike Woodard from, where are you from, Mike?
Cody, Durham.
Durham, thank you. Representative Vernetta Austin, Durham. Representative Rosa Gill, Wake. Representative Terry Garrison from Vance County. Representative Cynthia Ball from Wake. Representative Allison Dahl from Wake. Representative Zach Hawkins from Durham. Representative Pricey Harrison from Guilford. Representative Marcia Marie. Marie. Durham. Representative Robert Rávez, no, I'm kidding, Robert Reeves from Chatham. Teasing, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's right. And also, I'd like to stand up warm and welcome out for someone who hadn't seen you service in the Senate, Floyd McKissick. Floyd, it's wonderful to see you joining us this evening. Thank you for being here. Okay, a couple, yes. You are attending the Joint Committee on Redistricting and Elections here at the Durham Technical Community College. We want to thank Durham Technical Community College for making their facility available. A few housekeeping matters, if you don't mind. If you didn't notice, coming in, when you entered the doors, to your right was a men's room, to your left, or, I hope that's right, to your left was a ladies' room, or vice versa. So restrooms are out there. We have exits well marked, in the case of needing those exits. Would also like to thank the folks that are here with us, from our General Assembly staff. We have House Sergeant Arms, who kind of helps us keep the trains on the track. And that is, from the House, your friend and mine, Jonas Cherry. Jonas, he must be in the back somewhere. And then from the Senate Sergeant Arms, we have Jim Hamilton down here in front. Jim, thank you both. And Jonas, thank you for the service you provide not only to this committee, but to the people of North Carolina. From the General Assembly Police Department, we have Sergeant Paul Waters and Officer Tom Roachford. Thank you all for being here with us tonight as well. Thank you for the service you provide, not only for us, but for the people of North Carolina. Ladies and gentlemen, a couple of things that we've been informed of is that this room currently will only allow 77 people in at a time. So if you're speaking, do whatever you'd like to do, but when you get through finished speaking, if you choose to leave to allow someone else come in, should we get to full capacity, I will leave that totally up to you. We have a nine o'clock leave the facility time, so we're going to get right to the speakers and try to get done, just here, just as many as we possibly can. We have speakers that have signed in online, as well as being here. But before we start, I want you to understand this. It's come to our attention, and the chairs and individuals would like to celebrate Yon Kapor. And with respect to that, we'd like to begin by allowing anyone who is participating in Yon Kapor this evening, that's signed up to speak, to go first. So at this time, if you wish to do that, and you had signed up to speak, would you please raise your hand? Seeing none, we will go right to the speakers. And I'm going to tell you right now, with cursive and some of y'all's penmanship, it's going to be, we're going to have a challenge of some of the names, so I'll do my very, very best. The first person we have signed up to speak is Angela Sims McMillan. Angela, if you'll come to the microphone right here, we will have Sergeant Arms help you with any needs you may have. Once you get to the microphone, you will have two minutes. They will show you on a placard when you are nearing your time, so it won't be just like cut off. So they'll kind of give you an idea, and this goes for everyone that's here speaking tonight. We're all North Carolinians. We're all friends. We're all working to the same common good. This is North Carolina. We're your friends. Speak open. No need to be nervous. We're here to listen to you.
Keep it on.
And thank you for being here.
Sure, thank you. I'm here to speak for those who cannot speak. At 71 years young, I just got my first grandchild. So I'm here to speak for him and others. Thank you. I'm talking from personal opinion, and personal opinion only, and I just want to say that redistricting is a legislative matter that concerns me very much. I believe that districts should be drawn in a compact format. Non-compact districts confuse voters. They split communities of interest, and they're often drawn to benefit certain voters or certain political parties. I live in the Hope Valley Farm area community near South Point, and I've been there since the early 90s. I have had five different places to vote. So I've gotten the one-minute mark already. Districts must be drawn that do not split precincts. Split precincts confuse voters. They make it harder to administer elections and are often used to benefit certain incumbents or certain political voices. Cities and towns should not be divided unnecessarily just to protect the incumbents. Legislators should consider communities of interest and not divide them to protect incumbents or specific political parties. African-American voters should not, must not, be packed into few districts through racial gerrymandering to diminish our votes and our voices. And finally, I just want to say thank you that Democratic voters should not be packed into few districts. Stop. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. McMillan. Next individual has Veronica G. Robinson. Veronica, if you would approach the microphone. Thank you for being with us this evening.
I actually do not have, my name is Veronica Gottfried Robinson, and I actually don't have any real comments. I mostly have questions. And one of my questions is, where are the maps? I was, I would have thought that at this meeting, this town hall meeting, even though we would discuss these various issues, I mean, various things about the redistricting, that there would be some maps where we can see what the districts kind of are looking like right now. And my next question is, if the maps are not ready, when will they be ready? And will they be ready in time for any kind of feedback from the community, or will we have that option to do that? Those are my questions.
I've been reminded that when you come to speak, either if you're representing yourself or an organization, for our records, if you would, please mention the organization you may be representing. If not, you're representing yourself, that's fine as well. Our third speaker.
I am a member of the Durham Committee on the Affairs.
Oh, okay. Thank you so very much. Good thing I had that note right after you got through speaking, yeah. Thank you. Annette Rice. Annette, thank you so much for being with us this evening.
Thank you for allowing me to come. I too am a member of the Durham Committee. I do live in Hope Valley, like the young lady before me. I'm here because I have five grandchildren, and I don't want to see districts drawn to actually benefit one party or the other. I think each party should have the opportunity to allow their voters to pick them and not the district. And on that behalf, like my colleague before me, I would like to see the maps and know what we can do to help redistricting when it comes time. That's all I have.
Thank you. The next speaker, Tom, here is my first mess-up here. Rohaski? Did I do okay? Thank you. Tom, thank you also for being with us this evening.
My name is Tom Rohaski, and I'm an Orange County voter. First of all, I would hope that the redistricting would reflect the number of voters in each party. That's one of the issues I have. Also, I would like to suggest that you have transparency in the entire redistricting process. Therefore, after the committee has finished its work, there should be another public session for voters to be informed and evaluate its findings. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for being with us this evening. The next speaker I have is Laura Hermine. Thank you. And ladies and gentlemen, we're, I guess, grateful to have people here, and we're also going to have an interpreter to help with her comments tonight.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
My name is Laura Nainé. I've been a community leader for 20 years. I had worked at the Duke University with the Department of Sociology. I've been doing research interviews. I've worked in neighborhoods with low-income families. I always support low-income families. The majority of the departments of the neighborhoods are deplorable, so is the salubres. So the majority of complex apartments, I would say they're like in deplorable conditions. The conditions are not good. And the majority don't have maintenance. And many of them, they don't receive the appropriate maintenance. I would also like to consider, like, to have better resources for parks. And more interpretation for our community.
Thank you. You did great. Thank you for coming out here this evening. I've exhausted the names on the first sign-up sheet. There may be another one outside. If not, we'll go to ones of you that may have signed up online. I have Gino Nizolillo.
Close, it's a tough one.
Thank you. Gino, thanks for being here tonight.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Good evening, members of the Joint Redistricting Committee. My name is Gino Nizolillo. I've been a resident of Durham for the last five years, during which I've seen increasing demand for representation that can help address resource inequities and meet head-on the housing, healthcare, and infrastructure challenges my growing region faces. I'm here today to demand a fair, timely, inclusive, and transparent redistricting process, a process we have not yet received, to get us the very representation we deserve. I work every day with dedicated North Carolinians who want a better future for their communities and votes that matter. They've done the work the NCGA would not to educate their neighbors about the importance of this year's redistricting cycle. And I understand their anger at what's already becoming a sham process designed to make it as difficult as possible for North Carolinians to take part. So far, we've witnessed your committee decide redistricting criteria in less than 72 hours with little notice for only one early morning public hearing in Raleigh. Your committee then slashed the number of public hearings this year to 13, a market decrease since 2011, with no hearings in the state's two most populous counties. Thus far, we have provided no livestream or videoconferencing from hearings, an option even the state of Texas has provided to their residents, nor language and interpretation options offered by the committee themselves and not normal citizens. Add to that, we have even refused to guarantee hearings so far after maps are revealed. North Carolina deserves better. The data to draw maps has been available for more than a month. Under the current timeline, draft maps could easily be available in the coming weeks. The committee should release member maps and hold more hearings across the state in September and October. These hearings should be accessible to every North Carolinian, which means language access, the ability to livestream testimony, and the ability to provide testimony via videoconference. For in-person hearings, the joint committees ought to provide PPE at all hearings, not normal citizens like us who have to bring our own, and hold them at our times, all hearings that are convenient for working people. We know there have been some at 3:00 PM. All aspects of the public hearing, including recordings and testimony given, should be made publicly available. This is the floor, the bare minimum that North Carolinians deserve, and I urge you to do better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gino. Vicky Parker. Vicky Parker. Is there a Vicky Parker in the room?
I'm coming.
Oh, okay. Take your time. Thank you for being with us this night, tonight, Vicky.
Thank you for having me. Good evening, everyone. My name is Vicky Lee Parker. Hi. I get to serve as the Executive Director of the North Carolina Business Council, and we represent hundreds of businesses, small and large, all across this great state. As you all know, small businesses make up more than 90% of the businesses in this state, and they employ almost half, or little, sometimes more than half, of our employees, and they create jobs at a rapid pace. And they're sprinkled throughout North Carolina, and they are also impacted by, you know, a gerrymandered scenario or gerrymandered communities. These businesses are impacted by the same things that all the residents are impacted by, when they have issues that need to be resolved. You know, they may live five minutes from their business, but they have one representative for their home and one representative for their business, and when they have an issue, they don't know where to go to get the issues resolved, or they have to go to two or three different people to try to get the issues resolved. That is not a good thriving environment for our businesses. They need a government that they can trust. They need to be able to know who to go to to get answers for their problems. And what's happening is that they feel, well, no one is going to hear them, so they just kind of check out. But that's not how our economy is going to grow and thrive. We need a government. We need to have fair representation. They need to feel that they can be heard, that their issues will be heard by the people they elect. So we come here to urge you to do exactly what you've heard today from other people, to have fair election, I mean, to have fair representation, and to be transparent in your dealings in drawing these lines. We need to feel that we can trust what you're doing. And right now, that trust isn't there, and we need to gain that back. So I thank you.
Elizabeth, thank you for being with us this evening.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Elizabeth Sprocco. I am a resident of Durham County. I live in Precinct 50, and I've lived at my current address for nine years, but I've been in three different congressional districts because of all the redistricting over the last decade. I'm really involved in voter registration and voter education in my precinct, and people have called me and said things like, "I think I got the wrong ballot at the polls because I've always been in David Price's district, and now I'm not. You know, what's going on?" And they're confused. And these are educated people. These are people with master's degrees. These are people with medical degrees, with PhDs, who can't figure out what district they're in, because they keep changing. And they keep changing because they keep being drawn, excuse me, I'm out of breath, unfairly. So here are my suggestions to draw fair maps so that we can just have them for 10 years. One, keep counties whole, especially for congressional districts. Keep precincts whole. My precinct was split into two different state senate districts in 2010, and it was deemed a racial gerrymander, but there's no reason to split up districts, or BTDs, in legislative maps, because there's a 5% variance that's allowed. Make districts compact. Do these three things for the voters, and don't sacrifice those three things for incumbents. Figure out how to protect incumbents some other way. Finally, if there are multiple county groupings for the legislative districts, I just ask that you choose the ones that best equalize the populations between county groups, and also give us a chance to make comments. Once these maps, once you have a proposed map, or two, or three, give us a chance to give you some feedback so that we can have fair maps for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Bremer. Jennifer Bremer. Thank you for being with us this evening, Jennifer.
Yeah, thank you very much. Good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Bremer, and I'm an Orange County voter as well. Thank you for holding this hearing in Durham and for committing to an open and transparent redistricting process. North Carolina voters must be able to observe the mapmaking and to have our say. Having spent many hours in NCGA meeting rooms, not as many as you, but observing the 2017, 2018, and 2019 redrawings, I would like to focus my remarks on how we can achieve a truly transparent process. The 2019 process was undoubtedly the most transparent process ever carried out in North Carolina, but we still can and should do better. Here are three specific recommendations that I hope you will take into consideration. First, management of work at the redistricting terminals, assuming you do it the same way. Even observers in the room found it very difficult to see what districts were being worked on and who was at the terminal. I can't imagine how people at home could follow this. There are easy fixes for this. The Legislative Services Staff could maintain a public Google spreadsheet that shows which legislators and staff are working at each terminal, with start and end times, and what counties and districts are being redrawn. Maps should not be permitted to leave the room in any form. Second, there should be a distribution of the draft maps. Please make every map filed or drawn on the terminals available to the public in electronic form that MapTitude, you know, sharing all of the data that MapTitude generates. In this day and age of, we don't really need paper copies, we need them in computer-readable form, specifically the shape files. It should be provided, and block assignment files for each map, and they should be released along with the statistics that MapTitude turns out, who drew the map and the image itself. Finally, public comments. We'd like to see what our fellow voters are saying, too. Please make the public comments available at the end of each business day, ideally by posting them to a Google spreadsheet so they can be shared. Georgia's legislature is doing this, and even including the names and county of each person who comments, we should do it, too. These improvements would help us live up to our state motto, "Essekuambedere," to be rather than to seem, and thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you. Susan B. McClanahan. Susan B. McClanahan. Susan, thank you for being with us as well.
I'm Susan B. McClanahan from Orange County. During 2011 redistricting, you held 62 public hearings. 26 of those occurred after draft maps had been released. In 2021, you offer 13 public hearings across our state before the maps are released, and one public hearing in Raleigh after their release. Your plan is inadequate. There should be 26 additional public hearings across our state after this year's drafts have been shared, so that citizens can respond to your proposals. 26 hearings would provide two public hearings in each of our 13 congressional districts. Public hearings could occur again in the 13 counties you've already planned for, plus in Buncombe, Cabarrus, Dare, Davidson, Gaston, Guilford, Johnston, Stokes, Union, and Wake. As some of the most populated counties in our state, Buncombe, Guilford, and Wake must be included in hearings after the draft maps, because these are the places that can most easily be gerrymandered. When you release the draft maps to the public, you should simultaneously share the complete data that was used to produce the maps, and simultaneously, the map shape file should be shared so that the drafts can be analyzed by those outside of the legislature. As you know, it is hard to tell how gerrymandered a draft may be without data. This would be a test as to whether you actually mean what you say when you claim to be committed to a transparent process. Your actions will speak much louder than your words. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. William Lucas. William, thank you for being with us this evening.
Thank you, and I'm a little bit tall.
I understand. You take your time. We'll get it fixed for you.
Thanks. Thanks, Commissioners, for this opportunity. I know I only have two minutes. I'm a preacher of 22 years, so you know that's difficult to do. However, I understand your plight. Dr. King said, "Voting is the process by which we decide in a democracy who gets how much money, healthcare, education, jobs, et cetera." If that is the case, letting individuals vote who have been incarcerated by your policies, who have been killed by your policies, it's difficult for them to vote for you. However, there are a lot of people out here that are very close to the Republican Party. If the racism dissipates, I think you would have a larger group of people following you. Tonight, in the few minutes that I have left, few seconds, not minutes, I would like to leave you with this. One minute. Lines have consequences. I'm going to tell you a story. I used to work for District Attorney in 6B, and I was a little boy then, 23 years old. I would see African-Americans getting arrested every single day. I asked my boss, David Beard, a question. I said, "Why are so many black folks being arrested?" And then I talked with an FBI agent. He said, "Mr. Lucas, I want to go higher, but my boss tells me no." Policies make a difference. Lines make a difference. Have you been to a Hardest Lady lately that can't find employees? Your lines are not only affecting minorities, it's affecting all of us. We all rise together, or we all fall together. I pray you make the right decisions tonight. God bless you.
Thank you. Angel Hamad.
Y'all would make me go after the best speaker of the night.
Ryan, thank you for being with us this night.
Thank y'all for having me. My name is Ryan Jenkins. I am president of the Progressive Caucus of Durham County. Look, as much as this is an exercise in screaming into the void, it is incumbent upon every citizen to speak truth to power. And that truth is twofold. First, these maps need to be drawn by independent, nonpartisan civilian agencies or computer programs. We've all seen this before, haven't we? Corruption, bias goes into these maps openly. They get overturned for the same reason, and then it comes back in a more purified and acceptable form, and that can't be allowed in the future. We need a safe election for the people. Second point, multiple listening sessions. You got to have them after this. Once we've seen the maps, the people need to be able to comment. Thank you. And Carthago DeLinda Est.
Thank you. I'm going back to the second sheet of people that attended tonight and signed up tonight, and the first name on that list is Angel Valdez. Thank you also for being with us this evening.
I thank you for your time. So my name is Angel Hyman. I don't know if my name got messed up, but I represent the Latino community, and my question is, what we're doing is right, you know? Who are we benefiting, you know? The question is, we should have a lot of diversity into these communities so that we can know what's right. I just hope that what you're doing is for the best for the people. I thank you for your time.
Thank you for being out with us this evening. Gary Foreman. Gary Foreman. Thank you, Gary. And thank you for speaking to us this evening.
I have some prepared comments here. I'm a little bit short, aren't I? My name's Gary Foreman. I live in Durham now, and have since the early '70s. I'm here as a private citizen, although I wish to acknowledge being the beneficiary of All on the Line, AOTL, and their efforts to make the voting public aware of the seeming obsession of the NC General Assembly and of the North Carolina Republican Party to degrade our state from being even classified as a democracy. Efforts that include the biased and gerrymandered drawing of voting maps. Because of groups like AOTL, I have been made aware of how unfair and unrepresentative matters have been made so far by the Republican troll of the mapping process. Despite North Carolinians having Democratic voters and the majority over Republicans, 36 to 30 percent, the Congressional House of Representation is over 60 percent Republican, eight of 13 seats, and there are super majorities of Republicans in the North Carolina House and Senate. And the committee needs to know that it's just not a noisy, grumpy, citizens like myself or idealistic organizations like AOTL that are complaining about unfairness. It's the Supreme Court itself that recognized it and struck down your racially biased efforts back in 2017. And I find that the racially biased cited by that court was far from a coincidence, being that the Republican voter makeup is 91 percent white and 2 percent black. So I am, as a citizen, extremely distrustful of this committee of adopting maps that are at all fair to the voters in this state, and even in communities of interest in our county. But know that many of us US citizens are now aware of this unfavorable track record, are aware of the various strategies applied against communities of interest in cracking and packing, and we're watching, watching for you to pursue the process in a fair and representative manner.
Thank you very much. Jill Mertens. Apologize if I got the last name right. M-E-R-T-E-N-S.
That's perfect.
Oh, thank you, Jill. Thank you for speaking with us this evening.
That's okay. I'm used to lifting my head up to talk to people. I was born in North Carolina, but I got here as fast as I could. My name is Jill Mertens, and Wake County resident, who perhaps represents the flood of Yankees moving into this state. My husband and I moved here in 1999. I love this state, and I thank each and every one of you up on the stage for serving. Personally, I'm an ex-Republican who is now registered as independent, and I made this change because of things just like the redistricting debacle after the last census. It was a national embarrassment, and I'm sure we can all agree, that's not how we want our state to make the national news. I'm here today asking for transparency of, number one, the process that you're using; number two, the people or the consultants that you engage; and number three, the criteria. Somebody said the criteria was posted. Forgive me, I have not yet seen that, but I would hope that it would factor in that we want to keep communities of common interest bundled together. We want compactness, so we don't have those crazy snake or dragon-shaped districts, and apply the one-person-one-vote principle. I don't know if anybody saw it. I brought reprints, if you're interested. An August 20th article in the News and Observer actually had a map from a map nerd based here in North Carolina. He said that these maps slightly favor the Republicans, not because of any political bias, but just because of the way the population is distributed across our country, our state. I can buy that. That's competitive and still allows the people to speak on any particular matter. North Carolina is a purple state. I hope you will employ a fair process to allow the people to make their will known. First and foremost, you serve the people of this state, not a political party.
Thank you. David, I apologize. Professor David Florine, is that right? Florence, thank you. Thank you for being with us this evening.
Good evening. I apologize in advance. I just found out about this meeting today. I've recently moved here from New York, so I am a Yankee, moved down here. I moved down here because, A, it's an intellectual paradise with all the academic prowess as a professor and educator, and also the people are just spectacular. And I live here in Durham. I moved here three months ago. The reason I decided to speak is I run several businesses, including a nonprofit education company, a for-profit education company, and also I run a political think tank called Consensus. We work with Republicans, Democrats, liberals, conservatives, libertarians, and socialists with the idea of building the best policies possible and building consensus between different groups. And so I'm offering my services, my company, we have over 200 educators working for my company, and offer you, the panel, opportunities to work with us to help in a nonpartisan way, as well as help both sides in a political spectrum to get their ideas across. I teach strategy, innovation, research, and alike, and I'd love to offer our company's capabilities to you. So that's basically it. I wanted to introduce myself to the community. It's a fantastic place to live already, other than the heat in the summer, which I cannot stand. But other than that, it's fantastic, and green, lush, and fantastic people. So that's why I'm here. I figured I'd voice my desires to help.
Thank you, David. Welcome to North Carolina. It gets better. Take just a minute. We had a young man walk in to be with us this night. Representative Abe Jones from Wake County. Abe, thank you for being with us. Nicholas. Tell me your last name, Nicholas. Thank you. Thank you for speaking with us.
Yes, thank you, and I'm here with the North Carolina Association of Educators.
Thank you so much.
So as a longtime civics teacher, I can say firsthand how confusing this process is to students and community members. Students quickly grasp the basic idea that districts should have similar population sizes to ensure fair representation. But when I show them the actual maps, and students study the correlation between voter turnout and actual election results, they become frustrated. My mission as a civics teacher was always to help students first understand how our system works, and then help them buy into the idea that our democracy works better when they participate as actively engaged citizens. That job is made harder when students, in particular Black and Latino and working-class students, look at district maps and draw the perfectly reasonable conclusion that the system is designed to sideline them and minimize their influence. Please draw maps that are compact, that maintain communities of interest. For example, here in Durham, elementary schools like Aran Harris and Fayetteville Elementary are in the same attendance zones as certain middle schools and Hillside High School, where I taught for 11 years. Those school and parent communities are important, and maps should maintain that cohesion by placing the schools that share overlapping attendance zones in the same political districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Nimasheena. N-I-M-A-S-H-E-E-N-A. Is your last name Burns?
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for being with us this evening.
Not dead short. My name is Nimasheena Burns, and while I'm not representing anyone in particular, in full transparency, I am a county commissioner here in Durham.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Fifty-eight years ago today, Addie Mae Collins, Denise McNair, Carol Robertson, and Cynthia Wesley walked into the 16th Baptist Church, and it was blown up and their lives were cut short that day, because somebody thought it was important to send a message that voting was not in the best interest of black people. So while we have decided that cutting people's lives too short is no longer the process, cutting people out of the process is the new practice. I am here today to ask for three things. Support transparency measures. I am hopeful that we will be allowed to witness the map drawing, and that's, and I'm thankful that we had this opportunity to give our input today. But we need additional public hearings. I'm happy that you have given us the opportunity to give feedback after this is over, but we need another opportunity. I would also like for you to allow us to be, more people to be in the room when these maps are drawn, and I would also like to ask for independent, nonpartisan map drawers. When partisan gerrymandering occurs, it allow, it always, it is always at the expense of the political voices of communities of color. When legislators feel secure in gerrymandering, they are less likely to listen to voters and are harder to hold accountable. This contributes to voter frustration and voter apathy. District lines should not be manipulated in the name of competitiveness. We should not rely on metrics that ignore the will of the people and allow our diverse communities to be broken apart in the name of competition. As an elected official, I shouldn't say this, but voters should be choosing their politicians, not the other way around. States across the country are pushing for meaningful redistricting measures that protect their residents from partisan gerrymandering. North Carolina can do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Going back to those that signed up online. John Hollingsworth. John Hollingsworth. John, thank you for being with us this evening.
Certainly. I am going to raise this in an equitable manner, for those that come after me. Good evening. My name is John Hollingsworth. I'm an engaged citizen from Durham, North Carolina. Let me first say that I am under no illusion that our comments tonight will affect the outcome of the current redistricting interference. Our GOP-controlled legislature has shown no interest in these proceedings or our desires throughout the last 10 years. So I direct my comments to the elected Democrats assembled, and indeed, all North Carolinians interested in good governance. I come tonight with a bold proposal. I want to make it impossible to gerrymandar our districts. The only way I see to do that is to remove all human interference with the outcome. My perspective is that any time you have a human touching the borders of our political districts, that you invite bias, either based in corruption or just in the difficulty inherent in representing the needs of all constituents. The technical specifics are too complex to adequately discuss here, but there exists open source software at autoredistrict.org that can create districts that are compact in form, equal in population, and minimize splitting of cities and counties. Furthermore, this software also ensures that neither political party is disadvantaged due to the types of unintentional gerrymandering that have been identified by political scientists when purely geometric methods are used. I am sensitive to the fact that many here tonight have come to argue that their class, community, or cause must be protected, but I say to you that that advocacy is simply gerrymandering by another name. Those advocates might say that computer-drawn districts, as I propose, would not sufficiently protect their specific interests, to which I say, exactly. I envision a state in which the districts reflect the political will of the voters they contain, both, from both major political parties. Of course, there are inherent problems with the two-party system, but it is the one we have today, and it's the one that must be addressed, not wished away. Lastly, I believe that this method could bring about a new politics in our state. If a politician had to appeal to multiple constituencies, and the citizen had to engage a less entrenched politician, I believe that could be a path to a less divided and more functional society. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Senator Murdoch. I called your name, but you may not have been in the room earlier, so we're going to give, it's your area, so we're going to give you hometown privilege here. And with us tonight also is your Senator Natalie Murdoch, if you'd like to. Nancy McLean. Nancy McLean. Nancy, thank you for being with us this evening.
Good evening, and thank you. My name is Nancy McLean. I'm a historian of the United States and a faculty member in history and public policy at Duke and a Durham voter. I'm here tonight because I'm deeply concerned about the state of our state and our country. As a historian who studies the political process, I know that self-interested gerrymandering by any party undermines the principle of one person, one equal vote. In recent years, however, we have been subject to a particularly extreme form of partisan gerrymandering, using state-of-the-art mapping software and micro-targeting data to divide natural communities and dilute the just weight of their votes. This unnatural division of the electorate has produced the arch-polarization that now threatens our public health in the pandemic. Because when districts are drawn to guarantee one party an absolute monopoly, the only competition that will come from members, the only competition will come from members of the monopoly party who are more zealous than those they seek to replace, in what the warped lines turn into the only elections that count in cartel politics, primaries. This kind of line drawing is killing us, literally now, particularly supporters of the party that has drawn the current lines, that reward extremism. Surely no party should draw lines that result in the death of so many of its own voters and the overwhelming of our hospitals, particularly in rural areas. But here we are. This is not just a North Carolina problem. I know our country is in fact the only one in the world that lets elected officials choose their voters. But here's the good news. All American voters just about hate gerrymandering, and in fact, herpes polls better than gerrymandering. Majorities of voters in both parties and among independents believe it is wrong for politicians to be choosing their voters rather than the other way around. All of us want honest districts that are also competitive districts. When citizens put redistricting, oh, shoot. I timed it, and it worked. Okay, well, the fact is, when redistricting reform has been on the ballot, it has won by overwhelming majorities among Republican voters, Democratic voters, and independent voters in red states, blue states, and purple states. One last thing. These, all right. Never mind. Okay, only one thing. It's our choice, and we would like to see you make the ethical and fair choice. Thank you.
Were you Diane, or were you Nancy? I apologize.
Nancy.
Thank you. Diane Horrigan. Thank you for being with us this evening, Diane.
Thank you. I'm Diane Horrigan, and I live in downtown Durham. Durham is experiencing massive growth and is the largest community in District Four. A fair amount of the district is rural, and Durham's needs are totally different with regards to affordable housing, gentrification, parking, traffic, infrastructure, and climate. As an example, because of the construction of high-end condos and apartments, 94.7 percent of my tract lacks tree canopy. Within the next 25 years, there will be an increase from 21 to 31, 39 days of temperatures higher than 95 degrees. That's an increase of 18 days. Without modern infrastructure, our community of concrete and windows is hotter and does not have the same needs as a rural community. The elderly, the very young, the sick, and the poor will be unduly affected. So number one, Durham needs to be in a district with communities that have similar needs and growing pains. Number two, North Carolina is one of the most gerrymandered states in the country, and I find that personally embarrassing. We have a reputation for picking voters for our representatives with surgical precision instead of voters picking their leaders. Duke Professor Jonathan Mattingly has testified how districts can be drawn fairly. Therefore, it's simple. Cut out the politics and follow his advice. I invite you to take us from one of the most gerrymandered states to the least and improve the state's reputation. Number three, if you are not going to follow Professor Mattingly's program to fairly draw maps, then you should hold hearings again after you draw the maps, so we can give better input before the maps are finalized. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Gary Whitford. Gary. Hey, Gary, thanks for being with us tonight.
Thank you. Thanks for being here and holding this referendum for us. We basically want to say, I'm from North Carolina my lifetime. I've lived in Durham for 36 years, but I, and I know that gerrymandering is something that we're not all proud of, and so I do want to applaud the General Assembly for the openness and transparency that it seems that you're after, and also would like to commend you for, commend them for not including the racial and political concerns that are going to be something that's going to impact the drawing of the lines if you let it. I think the lines should be following county lines, and worst-case scenario, no matter what you do, somebody's not going to like it. And so there's going to be glee, there's going to be saw, there's going to be disapproval, there's going to be approval. But what anybody that's involved in the process needs to know is fairness bipartisanship is really what needs to happen, but we know that that's going to be challenged by somebody. So I'd like to appeal to the people of the state to realize that the bipartisanship is going to be perceived by someone as being the cause for how the lines are drawn. And so we need to realize that without having some type of unity in our state and our country, then we're going to continually be fighting this. So I just wanted to applaud the General Assembly for doing what you need to do and what you will, do we think. what you will, do we think.
Thank you, Gary. James Ramsey. James Ramsey. James, thanks for spending some of your time with us tonight.
All right, thank you. I'm Jim Ramsey from here in Durham in Mr. Hawkins District. Thank you for this opportunity. My hope is that this redistricting process will result in districts that pass the political and legal sniff test on the first try because they are fair from the start and not after years of lawsuits and unfair elections. To accomplish this, my greatest wish is for an independent commission. I recognize that won't happen this cycle, but want to explicitly support this approach. My further comments today are predicated on the purple nature of North Carolina, recognizing the virtual 50-50 split between the major parties' vote totals in recent years. So what constitutes fair? That means districts should be constructed such that the voters, not the makeup of the district, will truly have the opportunity to determine election winners. More specifically, this means that minorities' voices are heard across the state and are not packed into minority or black or Hispanic districts where their voices are watered down. Also, this means that we won't pack one party's voters into fewer districts to minimize their voices either, thereby recognizing and honoring historical election results when creating these districts. In terms of the mechanics of constructing fair districts, what should we consider? Compactness, which a lot of people have talked about, is, should not be the highest priority. It should be a factor, but should not be the highest priority. This would assuredly create numerous non-competitive districts and undermine North Carolina's purple nature. Snake-like districts like the old Congressional 12th are not the objective either. Voting tendencies of the parties across each region, county, city, et cetera, must be recognized so that no party's voice is minimized. Given the geography and voting patterns in this state, however, it is almost inevitable that some districts will end up strongly favoring one party or the other. The number of these districts must be minimized. So in closing, respect each party's voices, respect the voices of all races and ethnicities, honor our purple nature, and create districts where the voters determine the outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Jen Alexander. Jen, thank you for speaking to us this evening.
Good evening. My name is Jen Alexander, and I'll start by saying thank you for holding these town halls and for not proposing rules that roll back too many of the gains from the last round of redistricting. However, and I know you knew that was coming, the bare minimum that you should be doing is to approve an independent redistricting commission. Multiple studies, including one by Best et al. published in 2019, show that redistricting commissions create maps that are more compact and competitive than ones created by legislatures. Commissions whose recommendations are not overridden by their legislatures and which require inclusive voting, such as the one proposed in House Bill 437, are even capable of generating maps with minimal partisan bias. Even if you believe you can create maps as good as an independent commission, I would like to point out that, one, House District 43 looks like a seahorse, and, two, your constituents no longer trust you to create maps. That trust is not easily regained, and our own election system is in desperate need of public trust, as is the legitimacy of your own authority. Again, an independent redistricting commission is the least you can do. Ideally, I want to see North Carolina progress to policies that enable proportional representation, where our conservatives in cities and liberals and conservative bastions still have a voice in our legislature. That would mean shifting to multi-member districts with ranked choice voting. The 1986 case Thornburg versus Gingles does not prevent multi-member districts. North Carolina simply opted for single winner districts that could be gerrymandered to reduce minority representation rather than include ranked choice voting or other methods that would lead to minorities gaining the full power of their vote. These larger districts make it harder to gerrymander since they would need to loop around whole towns instead of just certain neighborhoods. Since it costs more to campaign in multi-member and at-large districts, I would see that the General Assembly approve funding for candidates that prove their viability. We can finance it with the money we'll save from not having to redraw the General Assembly's hubers. I would also ask that you set a good example and put your masks back on because my children are not old enough to be vaccinated.
Nathan Klick. Nathan, thank you for being here with us this evening.
Thank you for having me. I am a business owner, a veteran, and a father of four. I have a sister who does not vote. Now that breaks my heart as a descendant of those who attended North Carolina A&amp;T, as I did, Aggie Pride, and participated in the civil rights demonstrations in the 60s. It breaks my heart that I have a sister that does not vote. But she does not vote because she doesn't think it counts. She doesn't think it's worth it. General, this General Assembly, through its act of gerrymandering, has stolen the voice of the people. This is an attack of democracy, plain and simple. I mean, there's no other way to describe it. This General Assembly needs to earn back the trust of the people. That's what everyone here has been saying tonight, unless I'm wrong about that. Did I hear everybody right? We need to regain, this General Assembly needs to regain the trust of the people. Protecting incumbents and advancing your own political agenda, our own political careers, cannot be your purpose. And here's an idea, if you want to protect incumbents, serve the public. We will reelect you if you do that. Again, my name is Nathan Klick. I'm a business owner, a veteran, and a father of four. Democracy is under attack. We need to put people before partisan interests.
Going back to what I believe is the last people presence signing sheet here, Nida Alom, Nida, flip a coin, I got it wrong. Hey, no, you're fine. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, I'm not Nida, but I'm here on behalf of Nida. She had to go to a county commission meeting.
Okay. You've got two minutes.
Sure. So Nida says, "My name is Nida Alom and I'm a constituent as well as a commissioner of Durham County. Thank you to our legislators for their service to the state. I come before you to keep, ask you to keep Durham County whole, urge you to honor the Voting Rights Act so that minority voices are not prevented from having representation, and insist you host another round of public hearings after the maps are drawn to truly hear from your constituents and have a representative government."
David Dixon. David, thanks for being with us tonight.
Thank y'all for being here. My name is David Dixon. I'm a resident of Precinct 31 here in Durham. Been a resident here in Durham for the past six years. Come from one of the redder counties here in North Carolina, Rowan County. Thankfully have had the privilege of serving the Democratic Party during my time here in Durham. One of the things that we have consistently, consistently worked against, whether here in North Carolina, other states across the South, is racist gerrymandering. One of the things I think a number of us are working and advocating against is the illusion of bipartisanship. We know that a lot of folks on the other side of the aisle do not have the people of North Carolina's best interest at heart. We know that a lot of folks on the other side of the aisle continue to paint this picture that they want to work with our Democratic colleague, with their Democratic colleagues in office. We've seen how that, we've seen how that has been a lie in a number of, a number of bills that have been put forth with, you know, this redistricting process just kind of being a continuation of that, of that lie. Raleigh-Durham area recently by Forbes has been ranked as one of the top five places to live in the country, I believe with, you know, with proper, proper assessment. But North Carolina has been ranked as the worst place to work in the entire country. Ultimately, that's as a result of preemption laws that you all have put in place with, you know, the bogus HB2 bill that, you know, blocked people from, blocked local municipalities from raising their minimum wage. We have no worker protections here. Again, this is discontinuation of an illusion of bipartisanship. Ultimately, we just need to have an independent committee, however you all do it, whether it's through computers, whether it's through somebody that is not in office, that puts forth a, gosh, I'm going to say a gerrymandering committee, that because ultimately that's what you all are, a gerrymandering committee. We need to have a nonpartisan committee put forth together. You all decide however to do it, let the community decide however to do it, but we need to put people over profit, people over politicians, people over bipartisanship. Work for us as we put you all in office, so you should be working for us, not the other way around.
Alet Colston. Alet, thank you for being with us this evening.
Hi there. I'm Alet Colston, North Carolina, born and raised. I live in Wake County. I think since 2016, I've been in, I think, maybe three North Carolina Senate districts, two House districts, and two or three congressional districts. So I'm beginning to take it a bit personal. Maybe y'all don't like me too much, but Wake County now has well over a million people, so by necessity, Wake County will be divided into more than one voting district for Congress and state legislature. Because of the history of racially discriminatory electoral practices in North Carolina, the General Assembly should consider racially polarized voting data and racial data in an open and transparent way to ensure that minority voters in Wake County are not deprived of the opportunity to elect the representative of their choice. Federal courts have told the North Carolina General Assembly that when it comes to ensuring that members of a minority group that has been subject to past discrimination are treated fairly, the General Assembly must consider racial data. The court told the General Assembly in the Covington case, that's the one that was unanimously upheld by the United States Supreme Court, that legislators should, and I quote, "consider the impact of a districting plan on minority groups, including groups of voters previously subject to race-based discrimination." Covington is one of three cases where a federal court has found the General Assembly engaged in racially discriminatory electoral practices since 2013. Black voters should not be unnecessarily packed into majority-minority districts, thus diluting their overall electoral power, nor should communities with a large number of black voters be cracked into several districts unnecessarily and in ways that do not reflect other natural boundaries and communities of interest. And when the maps are drawn, North Carolinians should have the opportunity to comment on those maps because we're the experts on our own communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Gerald Gibbons. Gerald Gibbons. Gerald, thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you, thank you. I'm Gerald Gibbons, and I'm the president of Raleigh Apex NEACP, which covers Apex, Cary, Fuquay Varina, Garner, Holly Springs, Mooresville, and Raleigh. The census tells us who we are and where we're going as a nation, and helps us determine where to build everything, from schools to supermarkets, from homes to hospitals. It helps the government decide how to distribute funds and assist states and localities. Gerrymandering allows politicians to get reelected even if they fail to address the problems that the majority of the public want them to solve. Racial gerrymandering not only limits representation, it also limits the influence of people of color where they work, live, and play. The most vivid example in America is what happened to North Carolina A&amp;T in the last decade, nine out of 10 years in unconstitutional circumstance. In America, we have a freedom equation. Voting plus representation times taxes equal democracy. There is no division in that equation. We want you all to see us all for who we are. We're asking you not to discriminate against any of us for who we are. Draw districts for candidates to earn our vote, to earn our representation, and to do what we want with our tax dollars. That's democracy. That's true integration, sharing power, resources, and responsibilities together. The NEACP is prepared and on guard to challenge any redistricting that is unconstitutional. Thank you.
Thank you, Gerald. Gregory, thanks for speaking to us this evening.
Thanks for having me. So my name is Greg Herschlag. Together with Jonathan Mattingly, I run the Quantifying Gerrymandering Research Center at Duke University. We want to applaud the General Assembly for its decision to exclude partisan considerations from this redistricting cycle. From our previous analysis of North Carolina and other states, redistricting maps drawn without partisan considerations are responsive to voters. Responsive district maps are maps with election outcomes that change with voters' preferences. Stated simply, as voters shift party preference, their preferred party wins more seats. Many of the districting maps in North Carolina, that North Carolina has used in the past decades have not been responsive, as they have largely locked in the political outcome before the votes are cast. Responsive election maps are a minimal requirement for honest and functioning democracy. Citizens of the great state of North Carolina deserve elections that have consequences, where the citizens cast their votes and those votes have real implications. Our studies show that when elected officials use only nonpartisan data, this typically produces district maps that are responsive to the voters. Our research group at Duke will be publicly providing such analysis, and we welcome you and anyone else to use it as a guide for the redistricting process and as a tool to critique any maps produced. We will be the first to congratulate you, should you follow through on the promise of producing maps that have a typical level of responsiveness and which have not used partisan and political data considerations. Although there are many qualities to discuss when drawing maps, we've chosen to highlight responsiveness here as it is critical to the health of our democracy and critical to ensuring that the will of the people, whatever it might be, is reflected by our representatives. Thanks.
Thank you, Gregory. Claudia Coons. Claudia Coons, thank you for being with us. Claudia.
Thank you for inviting us. My name is Claudia Coons. I'm an Orange County voter, and I'm a member of the History Department at Duke University. I am so embarrassed because whenever you read an analysis of gerrymandering, where is North Carolina? It's right at the bottom, sharing the bottom place with Ohio most of the time. This is an embarrassment. Registered Democrats actually outnumber registered Republicans in 57 of North Carolina's 100 counties, and yet Republicans continue to dominate both houses in the state legislature. How can we have faith in our democracy when legislators choose their voters? My field is German history, actually specifically Nazism, Genocide, and Holocaust. My research examines what happened to Germans, ordinary citizens, when they lost faith in their democracy, when the Nazi Party won about a third of the vote and used that plurality to manipulate the Constitution and seize power. Yeah, we all know what happened, of course. It was tragic. Germans lost basic rights, the rule of law didn't apply, a dictator took them to war. But something else happened too. Something else happens under single-party dominance. Cynicism spread through the land, so did corruption. Germans came to be ruled by incompetence appointed on the basis of party loyalty. We need two parties in this state to keep our government representative but also capable. Think of the alternative. Imagine the head of the DMV, the Department of Revenue, the Health and Human Services. Imagine that that person who was put in charge of these committees had about the same kind of qualifications as our postmaster of the United States. With Mr. Klick, I think we want to regain the trust of the people. We need to have a hearing after the maps, and we need a professional redistricting commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. Leona Witchard. And thank you for speaking to us this evening. And thank you for speaking to us this evening.
Yes, thank you. It's my pleasure to be here this evening. I am Leona Witchard, and North Carolina is my home. I vote in Durham County, the town that little corner of Durham that's in Chapel Hill. So it's been interesting. I'm also a member of the League of Women Voters and participate in the Orange Durham and Chatham Counties chapter. So after the 2010 census, the League of Women Voters recognized that voting districts drawn in 2011 were unfair and probably unlawful, and the districts were the product of an obscure and secretive process that intentionally packed and cracked population groups, diluting their votes to the advantage of the legislators entrusted with the task of reducing the districts. The League joined other watchful and concerned organizations to take the case to court and won the argument that the districts were purposefully drawn to minimize representation by race and to limit representation of the opposing political party. We are continuing to actively advocate this year for fair districts to be drawn using the 2020 census data. The League is in favor of transparency and public input. Public hearing locations such as this one are scheduled for only 10 of the state's 100 counties. Furthermore, it would be a travesty if additional public comment sessions were not provided for the draft maps. At this time, only one hearing to be held in Raleigh has been scheduled after the draft maps are produced. Many organizations, including LWV and C, have asked for transparency in the process and opportunities for adequate review and public input on draft plans. To date, those requests have been ignored. In 2011, there were 62 hearings and 35 counties convened before and after the maps were drafted. So we should be increasing transparency, not moving backward. Thank you.
Thank you, Leona. Ivan Almonte. Ivan, thanks for being with us this evening.
Hi, thank you. So this is my first time in my hearing on redistricting, and I wish I could bring my friends, but I mean, because we're essential workers, I couldn't make it at 6 o'clock, so that's one of the things, this time is not accessible for all of us. So my name is Ivan Almonte. I've been a community organizer for the last two decades in Durham, and I'm also founder of Durham Rapid Response. I'm here representing my community, especially working-class people. Last year, it was a challenge for organizers to encourage Latinos to be counted due to the political climate in North Carolina. It was really sad to find out that too many low-income families have been displaced from their own communities. Immigrant essential workers are another community of interest that share the same values, culture, and celebrate as a community in the neighborhoods. Yentrification has displaced this community. I will ask you to consider having more hearings in the neighborhoods where the most impacted people by redistricting live. Also, provide interpretation services for Spanish-speaking people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ivan. Melanie Feinberg. Melanie Feinberg. Thank you for being here with us this evening, Melanie.
I'm a little short. I'll be brief. I have three things I want to say.
Melanie, hang on one second. Can you pull that mic down so it's facing her mouth?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number one, the timeline for the entire redistricting process should be made public and widely disseminated. Number two, there should be ample time and opportunity for public comment at each stage of the redistricting process, including after draft maps have been drawn. And three, districts should be as representative of the state as possible, meaning that certain populations and political affiliations should not be sequestered into particular districts for the purpose of partisan gain. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Turner. Jason Turner. Yes, there is Jason Turner. I'll go back to maybe the last sign up. Kaitlin. Kaitlin, I apologize. M-E-T-Z-G-U-E-R. You got to share with me that last name. Kaitlin, how do you say your last name?
It's Metzger.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for being with us this evening.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Kaitlin Metzger. I live in Durham County. I want to bring up two things today, one about the process that we got here, and one about regions and maps. First, I want to say that I would love to see the draft maps that you have before we can make comments about what we think about them. And I know we're under a lot of time pressure, it being September and filing in December, but that is because you guys made it that way. So we could push the primary to May and have more time for the back-and-forth process that we really deserve. I would like to see you guys move the primary in 2022 so that we can have an entire process of hearings after we see the maps that you're talking about. The other thing I want to talk about is the actual maps. Of course, I haven't seen them, but in this region, we've seen tremendous growth, and I understand that Durham may see some changes. What I want to see, though, is protected our black and brown communities specifically and our campus communities. As has been mentioned multiple times, A&amp;T suffered through bad maps forever, and I don't want to see the same for Central, and I don't want to see the same for any of our HBCUs across North Carolina. It's also been done at Asheville, Elon, Pembroke. There's multiple campuses like that. So I want to encourage you to respect student voters, keep them together geographically, and also, please do not crack apart black and brown districts, or excuse me, neighborhoods across North Carolina. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kaitlin. Brenda Pollard. Brenda Pollard. Thank you, Brenda, for being with us this evening.
I'm Brenda Pollard. I lived in the Forest Hills neighborhood for 36 years in Durham, born in North Carolina. First, I wrote a lot of notes, but I want to just say, if you will please look at this. These ladies and these gentlemen of all ethnicities came to talk to you. They could be anywhere tonight. They may be frightened to be in this room, but they wanted to be heard. Please listen to them. If you listen, you're the leadership. We've given you our votes. This is something they are begging you to listen to them, and that's what I'm asking you to do. Be fair with this. Be heard. Let this state shine across America that we're doing the right thing in this state of North Carolina. When you do these, when you draw these maps, this is the roadmap for our future of North Carolina. Please listen of their concerns. Some of these speakers have never been in front of a legislative, but you know that. They're intimidated. They shouldn't be intimidated. They should be able to talk to you. Thank you for letting me talk, because what you've heard tonight is remarkable. It is democracy at its greatest and its finest moment. They were General Assembly members before you got there. Stand on their shoulders. Make us proud. Make us proud of this map. We don't have to come here and keep begging and keep asking for more. This is about the future, not mine per se. I'm on the edge of the stage, but the future is the children, and the parents are so upset because of masks. I will stop, but I will leave with you. Make us proud. Thank you.
Thank you. Shalandra Greenlee. Back to the sign up online. Shalandra, thank you for being with us this evening. We'll get somebody up. Hang on a second.
Excuse me. Good evening. Hello, my name is Shalandra Greenlee. My family and I settled in this great city and county of Durham 13 years ago. I would like you to keep my city and county together. My community sits in East Durham, located at Highway 98 in Mineral Springs. If you know the area, you know the traffic, and the traffic has grown. However, my Durham community is the city and county, the small farm turned into a subdivision, the revitalized downtown, and the historical North Carolina Central University, Go Eagles, at Duke University. My community is my family like other families throughout the county of Durham. As a wife, mother of five, and business owner, my focus is this community. Its focus is education. Durham County continues to improve its educational system, and representation is a must for the intellectual and social growth of our children's future. Durham has had an 8.2% growth in our child population, which makes an educational focus and funding even more important. It is different from other areas such as Alamance, which has not seen this growth. Purposefully, breaking up communities takes away the community's ability to come together and to advocate for important issues. My family and children need representation that is fully committed to listening to our concerns. When maps are unfairly rigged, you end up seeing a legislator that represents special interests and politicians instead of representing the people. So like math class, show me your work. Keep my family and my community together. Thank you.
Thank you, Shalandra. All right, Adam, I got a 50/50 chance of blowing this last name. Adam Kreidler?
Yeah, you got it.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for being here this evening.
Yeah, thank you. I want to thank the chairman, members of the joint committee, other members of the General Assembly who are here. Appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I appreciate the steps that you've taken in the last few years to make this a more transparent process with more engagement with the community. It's important for all of us to see how the sausage gets made as voters, especially when it comes to redistricting, where as voters we are the ground meat that goes into the sausage. I want to believe that this engagement and this transparency isn't just empty political theater, and that we won't just have another few years of litigation and deepening distrust in the state. The reality is that folks like former Representative Lewis and Thomas Hopler have cast dark shadows over this process through their legacies. I'm sure you'll understand that a lot of us are going to continue to be skeptical until we have a reason not to be. Really, I think the truth is that redistricting should be a pretty simple and straightforward process. There was a 24-year-old man right here from Durham who recently won a national competition to design fair maps for this state. It took him four hours to do so, and he was using publicly available software. If he can do it, you can too. The point is that fairness in our maps promotes competition, and competition produces better outcomes for voters and for parties. It means that there's less of a chance of hyper-partisan extremists on both sides getting elected and influencing their party's agendas. If we wanted to live in a hyper-partisan, low-trust state, well, then we've done everything right so far. If we want to go to a new destination, we need to build new roads, and that can start right now with this process if you so choose it. I hope for all of our sakes that you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Adam. Kate Feldman. Kate Feldman. Hey, Kate, thanks for being with us this evening.
Hey, thank you for having me. My name is Kate Feldman, and I am the founder and executive director of You Can Vote, which started right here in Durham in 2014. And since that time, since 2014, we have spread across the state and served 43 counties, have registered over 50,000 voters across North Carolina, and have educated through one-on-one conversations over 750,000 voters across the state. So I'm really proud of the nonpartisan work that we do. We just are here to make people's voice heard, not tell them what to do or how to vote. Since 2014, it has been extremely difficult to educate North Carolina voters because the rules keep changing. Laws get struck down as unconstitutional, maps get struck down as unconstitutional for targeting African-Americans, and the voters are really in a hard place right now. And I'd like to share a little bit of my experience. I am one of North Carolina's over 2.4 million unaffiliated voters. I urge you not to take party affiliation into account when drawing maps, because unaffiliated voters are the second-largest political party in the state of North Carolina, and it will be the majority party soon. Our new registrants are deliberately choosing not to be affiliated with either party. Yes, you heard that right, the largest party is about to be none of the above. And as over 60% of the registrants that choose to be unaffiliated, what they say is, "Do I have to choose?" That's what we're facing. That is what has happened over the past 10 years to North Carolina voters. Now, many voters believe that their representatives are not responsive to the members of opposite party or to independent voters, and many unaffiliated voters do not participate in primary partisan elections, which is often where the elections are decided in North Carolina. 94% of North Carolina voters under 40 have never voted in a midterm primary, and this needs to change because the party affiliation of the voter should not be taken into account when you are drawing these maps. We will be the majority, and please take that into consideration and draw fair maps so that we can have representation as well. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Nima Sheena Burns, if you're still here, I have your name on this list too. I think you spoke earlier, so I'm going to... Thank you. Anderson Clayton. Anderson Clayton. Anderson Clay... Thank you for being with us.
Yeah, thank y'all for allowing me to be here. My name is Anderson Clayton, and I have the distinct honor of representing Person County here tonight because I had to drive 55 minutes in order to be able to give a public comment at one of these listening sessions, because they're not any closer to me where I am. Rural voters in this process are being left out by only having 13 listening sessions, and I realize we don't have some of our larger counties as well, so some of y'all might be looking at me like, "Who are you?" But rural voters in this state matter. I also have the opportunity to represent the Person County. Democratic Party is their chairwoman, and I also want to stand with everybody, asking for a nonpartisan districting committee to be drawing these maps. I don't believe that partisanship should matter in them either, and I think looking at the last 10 years in this state, we can tell why, and also just historically as well. I also want to say that I used to be student body president at Appalachian State University, so I'm here voicing that student concern too of, "Don't break up our students. Keep our universities together. They have a right to." A&amp;T with 5,000 students on one side of a line and 5,000 students on the other is absolutely ridiculous and should never happen again in this state, quite frankly. So just to make sure that y'all hear it from us, young voters are paying attention. We may not think that we are, but we are taking on leadership roles, and we are getting active in our state every single day, and we're watching you. We're watching this decision, and we're going to make sure that we voice it at the ballot box too come October for my municipal elections in Person County, but also next November as well. So thank you for what you do, but make sure that you are considering that you do work for the people in this room, and that's important for you to know in this process. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Anderson. Thomas Jeffries. Thomas Jeffries. Thomas, thanks for being with us this evening.
Thank you. I'm glad to be here, and I appreciate all the mask-wearing. I am a physician from Wake County, practice family medicine, and I certainly hope all the mask-wears are also vaccinated, because that's going to help everybody in North Carolina. And I'd like to say, I've grown up in North Carolina. I've lived here for more than 60 years. I'm proud of that, and we have a very diverse, beautiful state, but what makes it really beautiful is the diversity of our population. There is diversity here, there's diversity on the stage, and I appreciate that. And I would just like to say, I've served all kinds of people, rich and poor. We're all worthy, and we all want to vote, and we want our vote to count, and we can all vote now, pretty much, but our votes don't count. all vote now, pretty much, but our votes don't count because there's been so much gerrymandering. I hope that stops, and I'm following a bunch of speakers who have said it more eloquently than me, but our state motto is "To be rather than to seem," and I hope that's why we're all here tonight, and I hope that's why you're here tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Thomas. Gary Whitford.
I already spoke.
Already spoke. I thought that name sounded familiar as well. Aliana Ramos. Aliana, thank you for being here tonight.
Sorry, I'm short. And it's Ramos. So you were close. So my name is Aliana Ramos. I am a Raleigh resident, and I am also one of those unaffiliated voters that will eventually become part of the majority in North Carolina. Thanks for having us here, this hearing tonight. Now hopefully, we can see these in every county, and we can see them after the maps are drawn, and we can also see them online. So we've heard our redistricting chairs touting how this is the first time that political data won't be used in the drawing of new election maps, but that's not necessarily true. By including incumbent residences in the map drawing criteria, you are virtually ensuring that our state house and U.S. House of Representatives looks similar to what we've had for the past decade. But the people elected in our General Assembly don't currently reflect our registered voters. There are 7.1 million registered voters in North Carolina, 34.9% are Democrats, 33.9% are unaffiliated, and 30.4% are Republicans, making Republicans the minority party. Yet they are overrepresented in our state house. Of the state's Senate's 50 seats, 56 are Republican, giving them majority representation. And the same situation exists in the NC State House, where 67.5% of elected officials are Republican. We didn't get here by accident. We got here through gerrymandered maps. Yet by including member residences, AKA the addresses of incumbents, in the chromatic criteria, we are being asked to accept more of the same minority party rule for at least the next decade, while also being sold on the fact that minority data isn't being used, that partisan data isn't being used. Having a General Assembly that doesn't reflect the will of the people has very real consequences. For example, North Carolina hasn't had a minimum wage increase in about 12 years despite 57.5% bipartisan approval from voters, saying that they would support an increase from $7.25 an hour to $15 an hour. We can't accept more of the same for the next decade, and redistricting is a chance for fair representation. Thank you.
Beverly, thanks for joining us.
I am Beverly Kowalek, and I am a resident of Orange County. I am here to ask you to honor and respect the Constitution of the United States, which guarantees that each person's vote will be counted the same as every other person's vote. As legislators, you have an opportunity when drawing the new district lines to restore citizens' trust in government. To do this, draw lines that ensure a fair election. Make the proposed maps available online for the public to study. Schedule more than one public hearing after the maps are available for citizens to review. Make the process fully visible to the public. Citizens have a right to elect the people who represent them. It is up to you to uphold that right by honoring and respecting the oath that you took when you were elected.
Thank you, dear. Next speaker, your friend and mine, the former Senator Floyd McKissick.
Thank you, Representative...
Only two minutes.
Yes, yes.
Strict two minutes. Sergeant Arms, two minutes.
Thank you, Representative Torbit, Senator Newton, and of course, the other members of the redistricting committee. I've been on the opposite side on many occasions, on many a night. The thing I want to emphasize tonight is that we have an opportunity to do something that's unprecedented in North Carolina. We can do it in a profound and significant way, and it can be a roadmap for other states to follow, to emulate, and I think that opportunity is upon us. Yes, we have constitutional requirement to look at districts in terms of looking at the whole county rule, but after we look at whole counties, we should try to make our districts as compact as possible and go in there and draw maps that are as compact as possible, that really represent and respect communities of interest. To the extent to which communities of interest can be respected, we should do so. We shouldn't divide up small cities or towns, our neighborhoods that are cohesive in a way that they're very identifiable. The courts have said that we cannot have a court's voting that goes in and looks at partisanship. So partisanship has been stricken down by our state Supreme Court. Likewise, we can't gerrymander based upon race. But what we can do is a racially polarized voting study, and we should do a racially polarized voting study. To see where in those sections of our state that racially polarized voting continues to exist, it would be appropriate to take race into consideration in drawing those districts in those specific areas. That does not mean we do it all across the state of North Carolina. We don't want to look at being challenged based upon packing or cracking. We just want to make sure that those individuals and those citizens residing in those areas have an opportunity to elect their candidates of choice, and we should do a version of the map. I know you're going to do one that protects incumbents. Do a version that does not have incumbency protection, and let's see what it looks like. A clean slate, so that we can really see if we were using best practices, what we would end up with in terms of legislative districts and what we'd end up with in terms of our congressional districts. We know that we are a purple state, and our maps should reflect that when it comes to legislative districts and congressional districts. And of course, I know in terms of this area, one thing that's been looked at, I understand, is Chatham County and Lee County, to the extent to which they can be kept whole and kept together. I think that's something that, when it comes to this area, that should be respected and considered. Those are the observations that I would like to share. I'd like to say that I am not speaking on behalf of any group tonight, sitting here speaking for myself as an interested, concerned voter and someone who respects the challenges that you faced in drawing these maps. I know that collectively, collaboratively, working together in a bipartisan way, that you are up to that occasion. Before, it was done with a higher level of transparency due to a state Supreme Court decision. I hope that that same level of transparency will exist today, and I hope that after the maps are drawn, and perhaps several versions of those maps that include ones that don't have incumbency protection, that there will be a series of public hearings conducted across the state of North Carolina, and if that becomes challenging, we can do it as we did it before, and I sat there with Senator Bob Rucho. We did it virtually with remote satellite locations, being able to come in at different points in the queue, and all people from all across the state, large cities and small, were able to participate and to be heard. But I think if you can do that after the maps are drawn, that would be excellent. I commend you all for giving your time and your energies for being here this evening, and I hope that you're all up to the challenge of doing what's in the best interest, not only of the citizens of the state of North Carolina, but what can be an illustrative example and model that can be emulated across the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Your former cop, seeing how long you spoke. Patricia Kareem Obregon Lozano. Patricia. Patricia Kareem Obregon Lozano. Kyle Brazil. Kyle. Hey, Kyle, thanks for being with us tonight.
Good evening. My name is Kyle Brazil. I have lived in Durham since 2010. My daughters have been Durmites for their entire lives, and we live between the Lakewood and Rockwood communities within a very diverse community. I'm speaking for myself this evening. My concern is the lack of accessibility during this public comment process, no interpretation being provided by the Assembly, hearings that are right at the end of the workday, which is a burden on the many people in the Triangle and many people from rural parts of the state. Criteria that was voted on after a public hearing that was at 8:30 a.m. in Raleigh after only a few days' notice, not allowing people who work or people from the edges of the state enough time to plan to attend, let alone not enough time to analyze the criteria that was proposed. Criteria that is not the same as the 2019 redistricting criteria, which the Joint Committee has said it is, and criteria that appears to prioritize the Assembly's members' home residence address above and over the communities of interest. Do not protect incumbents, let the voters pick their representatives and not the other way around. And criteria that does not allow the review of race at all in the data set. A criteria which may sound fair on the surface but may have a disparate impact on our Black and Latinx and Asian communities, as the Assembly will not have the data to ensure that the maps drawn are not racist. I demand for a more inclusive process that includes more communities throughout the state of North Carolina, having hearings, a process that includes weekend hearings and hearings that are accessible online, given the fact that we are still in a pandemic. And we have no hearings yet scheduled for after maps. You have not done enough to ensure all the communities are heard. There are no post-map drawing hearings scheduled, and the Assembly's priorities are being placed above the people's interests. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Renee Miller. Renee Miller. Renee, thanks for being with us.
Good evening. My name is Renee Miller, and I must admit that I'm one of those people who's a little bit scared to be here, because in addition to being a citizen of Wake County, I'm the president of the Western Wake Republican Club. Your work in redistricting is important to me because of the rapid growth in the area of Wake County, which our club serves. Cary, Apex, Morrisville, and Holly Springs will all be affected by the recent influx of more technology-related businesses. Many of those people will be drawn to our towns, and we want to keep the character of our towns intact. This means being sure that we have all viewpoints be able to be heard. Presently, Wake County has a delegation of four senators and 11 representatives in the General Assembly. Of these 15 legislators, only one represents the views of conservatives in the most populous county in North Carolina. Neither of our congressional districts is even competitive for conservatives. Yet, Republicans make up nearly one-fourth of the electorate, along with libertarians and other conservatives among the unaffiliated. We ask for compact, competitive districts at all levels of government. We encourage you to draw districts which encourage vigorous debate on the issues. Our constituents want good schools, good roads, low taxes, the freedom to live our lives as we choose, and for people to be able to stand on their own two feet. We raise our children to pursue these values. In addition, I ask that you do what you can to minimize the opportunity for legal action in drawing the districts in Wake County. We would prefer to be able to have the people's business to be attended without having prolonged court battles as we have for the last 10 years. It has been expensive, not to mention further eroding the relationship between the people and their representatives. The confusion over the ever-changing districts has had no benefit to anyone. I urge you to draw competitive districts to get back to the people's work and to stay in touch with all your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. Matt Hughes. Matt Hughes. Matt Hughes. David Dick...
Already spoke.
Lee Mortimer. Lee Mortimer. Lee, thanks for being here with us this evening.
It's okay. Lee Mortimer, 33-year resident of Durham, and thanks so much for having this hearing. I'm not so concerned about Durham districts. We know they'll all be Democrat and by hefty margins. What counts more is how many seats each party gets in Congress and in the General Assembly. In our six highest-profile elections in 2020, the two-party statewide vote was 50.1% for Republicans and 49.9% for Democrats. Yet the analysts tell us Democrats should expect to win only five, maybe six, of our 14 congressional seats. That's less than 40% representation in a 50-50 voting state. Another way of looking at it is, if you're a Democrat, your vote counts as 80 cents compared to a Republican vote that counts as $1.20. They say it's because Democrats are clustered in urban and metropolitan areas while Republicans are more spread out. Democrats pile up bigger winning margins, like in Durham, but win fewer districts. So it takes more Democratic votes to win fewer Democratic seats. Democrats are suspicious Republicans will draw districts that are unfair to Democratic candidates, but Republicans don't have to do anything underhanded, and they'll still be in control, even if Democrats get more votes. The U.S. Supreme Court says it can't do anything about partisan gerrymandering, but state courts can. Our courts have acted, and so have other states. A few years back, Pennsylvania's Supreme Court rejected their congressional districts and brought in Stanford Law Professor Nathaniel Persley to draw new ones. Persley has also done work for our state. Pennsylvania is another evenly divided state, but its congressional delegation had 13 Republicans and only five Democrats. Professor Persley drew a new map that included partisan fairness as part of the redistricting criteria. In the 2018 and 2020 elections, Pennsylvania voted and selected nine Republicans and nine Democrats to Congress. North Carolina should not be... Voters should not be short-changed in representation just because they may live closer to other voters in their party. Advocates for fair elections should look to examples of other states, so our congressional delegation and our General Assembly fairly represent our state's voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Ziegler. Karen Ziegler. Hey, Karen, thanks for being with us this evening.
Hi, my name is Karen Ziegler. I'm a retired nurse and a retired pastor, and I'm not going to repeat things that have been said so far. I just want to say it's very moving that we're all here with so much passion, when I feel we've been told, some of us in so many ways, that our vote doesn't matter, you don't care what we think, and that this is just kind of theater because you're going to do what you want. So it's very moving that we believe so strongly in democracy, and I just want to say that this is a really pivotal moment for our country with regard to democracy. We are in real danger of losing democracy in this country, and I loved whatever somebody said about how you guys have an opportunity to turn a corner in this state, which has been in the forefront of partisan gerrymandering. And I really plead with you around issues of transparency. Please make the maps, as you draw them, online, available with full data file in readable form, and please give the people of North Carolina the opportunity to observe what you are doing. Also, so important, in 2011, there were three rounds of hearings and four rounds of map drawing, and this is only one map drawing, and then I think one hearing after that, and that just is not going to go any distance toward restoring our faith in our elected officials. I really agree with the person who said, "We have lost faith in you, and this is your opportunity to restore it," and this is a really important moment to do that.
Thank you. Laura Bravo. Laura Bravo. Laura Bravo. Clara Paulson. Clara Paulson. Clara, thank you for being with us this evening.
Hi, my name is Clara Paulson, and I'm a resident of Carboro. First, I'd just like to speak briefly to what I see as my geographic community. I consider myself part of both the Carboro Town community and the broader Chapel Hill Carboro community. I work as staff at UNC Chapel Hill, and like me, many people who live in Carboro and Chapel Hill work or study at the university and define our community in large part through the university's centrality and significance to that community. Because of this, I believe that the towns of Chapel Hill and Carboro should remain in the same congressional district as well as in the same state legislative districts. And I'd like to echo what other folks have said about keeping universities, communities together across the state. I think that's very important. Second, I'd like to comment on your process going forward. In order to come anywhere close to adequately serving the people of North Carolina, the committees must offer additional opportunities for community input after new maps have been proposed. Specifically, there should be a bare minimum of 20 hearings across the state, and these should be... should include hearings in higher-population counties that were excluded from these initial hearings, including Wake County, Guilford County, and Buncombe County. These hearings should also offer options for remote attendance and participation for those who are unable to attend in person or don't want to attend in person due to work or family commitments, disability, or safety concerns, given the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. John Leonard, Ph.D. John, thank you for speaking to us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. I've got a tough act to follow. I've got all these people here. I agree with everything that's been said. Thank you so much for being here. I'm Dr. John Leonard. I'm a Coast Guard, U.S. Coast Guard Vet, Ph.D. in geographic information systems, program manager IBM. I've lived in Cary, Wake County, since 1992, so shout out to Representative Doll, Senator Nickel, Representative Jones. I'm here to endorse five principles many organizations like Fair Maps North Carolina, Common Cause, No Labels, and others seek for drawing our electoral maps. As you know, North Carolina's constitution requires three simple things for U.S. Congress and NC legislative districts. A, equal population. B, be compact and contiguous, all-in-one geographic piece. And C, try to keep counties whole and minimize crossing community lines. The five principles. One, include experts and citizens as members of an impartial review commission who reflect North Carolina's racial, ethnic population and the full spectrum of community diversity. Principle two, include the legislature in the process. Obviously, you approve the members of the commission. Principle three, set strict rules for the redistricting commission work that (a) applies constitutional redistricting standards, i.e., compact, contiguous, keep local government units, and communities of social and economic interest whole. B, here's the punchline, do not allow use of party data or partisan objectives. C, use voting rules that require transpartisan support for any maps. Principle four, provide for extensive citizen participation and transparency. And five, make North Carolina maps final with the nonpartisan commission's vote. In short, use regular parliamentary order with public input, not biased partisan special interest backroom deals. In summary, please do not draw unfair, gerrymandered, partisan, unrepresentative, unconstitutional districts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Leonard. Joe Kapowski. Joe Kapowski. Joe Kapowski. Are you Joe? Joe, thanks for being with us this evening.
Thank you for having me. My name is Joe Kapowski. I live in Chapel Hill. I'm a former town council member there and former mayor pro temp. According to the North Carolina State Board of Elections, currently, 36% of North Carolina voters are registered as Democrats, 33% as unaffiliated, and 30% as Republicans. 36, 33, and 30. In the United States House of Representatives, however, there are no unaffiliated representatives. So somehow, we're going to have to divide up the unaffiliated voters of North Carolina for the 14 seats that Raleigh will send to Washington. Now, if we just divide unaffiliated voters 50-50, that will mean there will be eight Democrats and six Republicans in the North Carolina delegation. If we split 60-40 Republicans, that will make it a 7-7 split being sent to Washington. Okay? None of this begins to approach the 10-to-4 Republican-to-Democratic ratio that Dallas Woodhouse, the former executive director of the Republican Party, promoted on May 2. My request is to please draw redistricting maps that reflect the choice of the voters, not the choice of the party in control in Raleigh. And let me close with an idea. I've now listened to 60-some speakers here, and there's been a complete dearth of compliments. It's been... having sat in your seats and listened at public hearings, it would really disturb me that everybody dislikes what you've done. And that's what I'm hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. T. Anthony Spearman. T. Anthony Spearman. Mr. Spearman, thank you for being with us this evening.
Good evening. I am the Reverend Dr. T. Anthony Spearman, a resident of Greensboro in Guilford County, and the president of the North Carolina State Conference of Branches, NAACP, whose mission is to ensure the political, educational, social, and economic equality of rights of all persons, and to eliminate race-based discrimination. The reason I emphasize "all persons" tonight is to make sure that everybody understands that the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People is open to all people. We do not discriminate between Republicans and Democrats, rich, poor, black, white. Our services are available to all. Want to say that and lift that up, because there's one piece of landmark legislation that I'm hoping that those of you who are not minorities would make sure that you adhere to, and that's the Voting Rights Act of 1965. In November of 1963, I was a 12-year-old living in the state of New York, who was very hurt and cried all day when I learned that President John F. Kennedy had been assassinated. That's become the permanent furniture of my mind. Also, that has become the permanent furniture of my mind is June 25, 2013, when the Supreme Court of this nation returned the verdict that they were going to eviscerate the fifth section of the Voting Rights Act of 1965, which has hurt my people ever since. Those of you who are not minorities may not fully understand why we would compel you to please make sure that you use the Voting Rights Act of 1965 and Section 2 in your deliberations on making sure that these maps are drawn comprehensively. I see the stop sign. I'm going to stop, and that's what I have to say tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Reverend. We've come to the point of the evening where I have exhausted the people that were listed to speak this evening, and we'll ask, is there anyone in the audience that didn't get a chance to sign up to speak? If so, now would be the time to raise your hand, or... Yes, sir. Were you wishing to speak this evening?
Yes, please.
Okay. Can I get your name, please?
Marino.
You're going to have to spell it for me, please. L-E-Y?
L-E-O-N-E.
L-E. L-E-Y?
L-E-O.
L-E-O.
Leone.
Got it. Sir, you have two minutes. Thank you for being with us this evening.
All right. First of all, I want to thank you for your patience. I'm sure it's not very fun to come to Durham, a very progressive place, and hear all of this for two hours. What I do want to point out is a very easy way to avoid this in the future is just draw really good maps, and then when you come here next year, we'll be very happy. And thank you. And we'll say very nice things, and if you're not here next year because you drew really good maps, then you don't have to listen to us anyway, so that's also a great thing. My name is Marino. I'm a law student at Duke University. I'm sorry I missed your introductions. I was a minute late, so I don't know who you are, but I assume you're Republicans because you're up there and you're in power, and that's how it works here. I do want to thank you for your time and your attention and your eye contact, and thank you. Yeah. I want to thank eight of you for being off your phone the whole time. I want to thank you for at least trying to hide that you were off your phone. I appreciate that a lot. I am speaking for myself. I also think I'm sort of speaking for a generation, and my main question is just, what are you doing? And are you proud of what you're doing? And do you really think this is a good idea? I just feel like this is cheating in politics. I feel like it's un-American. I feel like you know these things as well, and it's clear that you have a lot of great power, and I think we all know from Spider-Man that with great power comes great responsibility. I hope you choose to use that responsibility. At Duke Law, I'm the president of the North Carolina Club, and part of the club is telling students about how great our state is and trying to convince them to stay and practice in the state after graduation. And you're making it really hard to convince people that this is a great state and that they should spend any amount of time here, more than they have to, to get a degree. I was raised Republican. My family's Republican, and if you're not Republican, maybe I'm misjudging the situation, but you're really losing us. You're losing my generation, and you're losing Republicans. You're losing the people who are in the middle, who are unaffiliated. You probably feel like you have to gerrymander because you don't have enough votes, but I'm telling you, you don't have enough votes because you're gerrymandering. And if you flip that, you will be A-OK. If you want enough votes, you should just have better ideas, and you don't have to come up with them. We will give you our ideas for free if you listen to the people. Those are the better ideas. So take those ideas, and please use them. If you don't, we're going to find a way to vote you out, and if you don't, my generation is coming for you, and we will not see you in the future.
Ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of all the members of North Carolina General Assembly, both Republican and Democrat, on the podium and sitting down here in front, we'd like to thank you for participating and sending or sharing some of your time with us this evening. Being no more speakers at this time, we're going to conclude our business and call the committee adjourned.